Special meeting to orders, January the 11th. And this is also our organizational meeting. And my vice chair, Dr. George, is not here this evening. He has got the flu, upper respiratory infection, or something going on. He is extremely under the weather right now, so he didn't want to come spread his germs among the rest of us, which we do appreciate that.
Thank you for that.
But with the absence of my vice chair, we need to get into our organizational business, which is electing our chairman of the school board for 2016. So I'd like to nominate my vice chair, even though he's not here. And I'd like to put that on the table for chairman, Dr. Robert George.
Second.
The nominations.
Closed nomination.
Nomination's closed. Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mr. Metford and seconded by Mrs. Kersky to nominate Dr. George as board chair. Dr. George is absent, so we can take him in.
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
And Mr. Metford?
Yes, thank you. And now we need to elect our vice chairman, so I need a nomination, please.
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Sparkley.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll close nominations. Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Mentor to elect Mrs. Haywood as vice chair. Dr. George is absent, Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
No.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
And Mr. Metford?
Yes, thank you. Mrs. Haywood, here's your vice chair sign.
Thank you very much.
Here's the hammer.
Oh, this is very nice.
It's all yours.
Thank you, thank you very much. It is my honor to serve this division for 2016 as vice chair. Thank you very much, everybody. Dr. Shandor, I'm going to turn to you.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Wanted to make a brief presentation to Mr. Metford for his dedicated services, our board chair for 2014, 2015, as a new superintendent over the last year and two or three months. I appreciate your guidance, leadership, and support. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
It's working the team, that's what we do. So thank you very much, it's been an honor to serve as chair. Now we look forward to sitting down there next to Paige and Cindy and watch this side of leadership again as I continue the next four years.
That is, I thank you for all your dedication and hard work to this division. It's good to know that you're still hanging around full-time.
I'm not going anywhere.
Also, I want to just, I know Dr. George told me he was going to be watching this evening, so wanted to thank him for his role as vice chair and look forward to working with Dr. George as board board as board chairman.
Yeah, Dr. George, he's learned a lot. I know having him as vice chair has been very, someone I could always call and just bounce something off of. I had, you know, a concern or something, it was just, you know, getting my thought together. And he very much is ready to take that leadership role. He felt so bad that he couldn't be here this evening, but he didn't want to give his terms to everybody else. So, Dr. George, I know you're watching at home, welcome as chair of the school board for 2016.
I'm speaking of recovery.
Yes.
Our next item is the organizational item, Resolution 16-01, approving the school board organizational business for calendar year 2016. I will now turn to Dr. Shandor for any information he wants to present on that.
Yes, school board members, I know you've had the opportunity to review the packets ahead of time, but if there's any questions or comments relating to this resolution, all of the attachments.
Any comments on anyone regarding the calendar and then next, first of all, the calendar?
I have no issues with the calendar. Everything looked fine. I mean, I guess we would make an adjustment if we had to throughout the year if something came up.
So is there, we have the calendar, we have, I want to go through all of this because they're all one item to be approved, organizational business calendar. We also have the schedule for manual review. Any concerns or discussion with that?
I'm good.
The other is the work session calendar. If no comments, then we have regional meeting dates for 2016. The other item is our committee assignments. For a number of years, we have, this board has worked with other entities of the county. Oftentimes we rotate, oftentimes we, and a lot of it's based on our work schedule. I know for me, working, at times I can't do anything during the day. So again, we have assignments throughout the year, and we have the board representative, and we have an alternate. Is it easy just, if it's your pleasure, we're just going to go down each one and make sure that that stays the same. WHRO, this past year Cindy Kersky has been the representative with Mark Metford as an alternate, but your pleasure with that?
I don't mind remaining on WHRO. Does anyone else interested in that?
Yeah, I'm the alternate, but I know that if it was work every day, it would be, if Cindy couldn't make it to a meeting, there's no way I could cancel classes and head over there because they got lunchtime.
I was going to say that's during the day. The other...
And I attend those meetings.
Okay. If it's my understanding, I'm going to date myself, we have board, one person is earmarked as the representative, but that does not preclude other board members from attending.
Right.
So, anyone can, any board member can do that. So we will leave WHRO as it is. New Horizons Regional Education Center, Paige Mentor is the board representative, Dr. Shandor is the alternate. And again, this is usually for all school divisions, a board member and the superintendent to attend. Comments on changing that, leaving it as?
I'm agree with that, we really love to stay with that, if I could.
I wouldn't mind being the alternate, because you're associated with it as superintendent anyway.
Correct. Paige, how's that work with?
The bylaws say that if a board member is out and cannot attend a meeting, that the superintendent fills in for the board. Never had an alternate come in as another board.
So the superintendent needs to be the alternate, is what you're saying?
He is the alternate.
Okay.
And if he's not there, then he assigns somebody, like Dr. James to come in.
Okay, that's fine.
That's the bylaws, the way they're written.
So the all-school divisions will be the same?
Yeah.
All superintendents will serve as alternates?
All of them.
Then I'm guessing.
Okay, that's fine, then we can leave it with Dr. Shandor.
Outstanding Youth Selection Committee, Cindy, you have been the representative, Dr. George has been the alternate.
That's really just one afternoon, probably one hour every year, you get together with a supervisor and the youth commissioners, and you go over student applications for scholarships. Sheila Nola and I have done that, and we kind of act as, in an advisory position with the youth commissioners, it is the county's scholarship.
Okay. It's a pleasure to leave it as is. I hear nothing to save the difference.
I can do it, it's just one hour.
Next is the Virginia School Board Association, that's the annual convention, and a delegate to the annual convention. Dr. George has been the representative, and Miss Kersky as the alternate. Was that?
It's usually the vice chair is always the representative, so that would roll you into that one as the delegate, and then we just have to have a backup to that.
Okay.
And I can be the alternate to that, it's not a, it's not many counts.
Okay. Cindy, any objections?
Unless Cindy wants to continue doing it.
That's fine, I've done it for several years.
So I will go in as the representative, and Mark, you'll come in as the alternate. Your County Department of Parks and Recreation, Dr. James, you have been the representative, and Mrs. Shearhardt has been the alternate.
Yes, ma'am.
And that has worked well for the division?
Yes.
Any concerns from board members that we need to change that? Okay, that will stay the same. Your County School Division, the health advisory, Dr. George has been the representative, and Al Bagreen has been the alternate. I have not heard anything from Dr. George that he wants to...
He mentioned that he had difficulty getting to that particular meeting, and he's been on it for a while. He said if anybody wanted to serve on that thing...
The time, the time for this meeting, do we know?
I think it moves around, I'm not sure.
Dr. James, yeah?
I'm not really sure.
Okay.
We can get more information, bring that back. We can always change it if we have to.
That'll work.
Do you want to leave it as is until?
Let's just leave it as is until we know more about it. I know there was a time, it was years ago, it was evening, and I attended when they moved some to the days, that was a conflict for me. So we'll find out more about that. The Special Education Advisory Committee, Mark, you have been the representative, and I've served as your alternate.
Right, and that one, just whoever the alternate would be, if I continue to serve on that one, if the meetings are during the day, it'd be an issue versus the meetings in the evening wouldn't be an issue, obviously it works good.
Do we know what that has been in the past?
I think there's some discussion about maybe changing or mixing it up a little bit.
They've had meetings during the day this year?
I'm guessing so.
Because I think there's a mixture of day and evening for that group.
We just have to be aware of that.
Okay.
So I don't know if that, if you can, if you still want to serve on it, I don't know.
I have no problem with being the alternate there, that in cases they date, two of us that have day jobs may not be the best fit for this. So I can come off and, Paige or Cindy, which if you're interested, special education.
That's fine, you two can do it, if you need an alternate to the alternate, I don't mind.
Okay. No, I would come off.
Oh, you would come off?
Yes.
I don't mind being the alternate.
Okay. Career and Tech Education Advisory Committee, Paige, I know that's you, whether or not you want to stay with that, and then Mark was the first alternative, and Robbie was the second.
Yeah, I could forego that, there's a lot of great businessmen and people that come from Thomas Nelson Community College, and cases of people from where you've been married, so it's a good group of people.
How often do they meet, Paige?
I'm thinking that we try to go, it was quarterly? Could be quarterly or something, it's not every month.
Okay.
Cindy Heskey heads it, I'm not sure, because they skipped some, weather really messed it up last year.
So how often did you go to a meeting, you recall, twice?
At least, I went three times last year, I think.
Probably a quarterly meeting, I guess.
It could be more, depending on the situation.
Do you want to stay with that, or?
Yeah, I'd be willing to stay with it, there's no problem, no one else wants it.
We can leave that as is. And the last, this is York Foundation for Public Education, Cindy, you have been the representative, and Dr. Shandor is the alternate.
I've been the representative for two years, I would like to stay in that position, and I have spoken to the president and vice president of the foundation, they would like to keep me as well as other board members and donors. We have a new employee, it's a transition year, I think it would be good for continuity.
Other comments?
Is there a particular reason we have the superintendent as the alternate?
I don't think anyone wanted to be the alternate last year.
No, okay.
Were you interested?
Yes, let me in as the alternate.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Okay. I think one thing, if...
I'll still be involved.
Oh, yes, please do, definitely.
The superintendent has a position on the York Foundation anyway, so it's really...
Maybe you'll replace him.
The one thing, and I know, and I'm going to use New Horizons as an example, oftentimes Paige will forward a newsletter from New Horizons to us, just to keep us updated on what's going on. So for those areas that we don't have a newsletter or anything, or maybe it's something that we can have all of these organizations, but maybe a quarterly report, something that comes back, a summary, something to say, what's happening with this organization, what's our part in it, what do we contribute to it, just to see how active we are.
What you're talking about, us as board members, bringing back something like a funnel, there's a couple of issues of concern with the special advisory committee.
Yes.
And it's my quarterly report, I'd bring back as a representative, hey, this is an overview, that's beyond the report they give us in particular.
Exactly. But this is board assignment, so I think it's something that may need to come back to the board for...
But to also include, like the York County Department of Parks and Rec, where we don't have a board member, we have staff.
Exactly, exactly. What I'm hearing is that it could, I'm thinking it could be quarterly, but if your particular organization meets on a more regular basis, it may need to be something more regular than that, or if something comes up within that quarter, you need additional action on it, and we not wait for that quarterly session. But I think, I just think that it's good to have board member report back to the organizations that they are representing the board on.
This board, were you able to capture all those changes?
Okay.
So, could, if there's, if there are no additional changes to the count, to the committee assignments, we can take all of the attachments, let me move back, all of the attachments to 16-01 for consideration and approval. So with that, can I have a motion to accept 1601?
I move that we accept 1601.
Second?
I'll second 1601.
Any other additional comments, concerns? Mrs. Ford?
This was made by Mrs. Kersky and seconded by Mr. Metford to approve Resolution 1601. Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
And Mr. Metford?
Yes.
The next thing on the agenda is the motion to approve the VSPA Code of Conduct for school board members. If you recall, each year, VSPA circulates this conduct code to all school boards across the state, and at the beginning of each year, each school board is assigned or is asked to sign it in its entirety, all school board members to sign this conduct code. I can remember vividly working at the state level when this started, and it earmarks different activities or positions that school board members should take. We have the official original document, I moved it so I wouldn't mess it up, it's here. And what I will do is pass it around as I talk about it, to get your signatures, and we'll wait for it, and we'll get Dr. George's signature later. I'm going to go ahead and sign it, Starly District 1.
Can you pass your ink pen around to me?
Yes, so it will be all the same.
One thing that I would like to, before it seemed like it had on there, or some document that I had seen, number 11, I will be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs, such as those sponsored by my state and/or national school boards associations. I just didn't want it to make it sound like we had to go to the convention.
I'm going to go through and ask people to sign and just identify them. And this is headed, "As a member of my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education, and to that end, one, I will have integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children and the welfare of the community, Commonwealth, and nation. Two, I will attend scheduled board meetings. Three, I will come to board meetings informed concerning the issues under consideration. Four, I will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input. Five, I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent, and to establish a process for accountability of administrators. Six, I will encourage individual board member expression of opinion and establish an open two-way communication process with all segments of the community. I will communicate in accordance with board policies, public reaction, and opinion regarding board policies and school programs to the full board and superintendent. I will bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all laws, state regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain, and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. I will respect the confidentiality of privileged information, and make no individual decisions or commitments that might compromise the board or administration. I will be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs, such as those sponsored by my state and national school board associations. I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience of all students in the public schools of Virginia. Therefore, I will always strive to demonstrate appropriate behavior, conduct, as a public school board member. And it's again, each member is to adopt this by our vote tonight, as a signature for each. With that, I will ask for approval of this document.
I'll move item D, the consideration for the New School Board Association's Code of Conduct for the school board.
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mr. Metford and seconded by Mrs. Kersky to approve the School Board Code of Conduct. Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm going to give this back to Dr. Shandor to have on file until we see Dr. George. And I think somebody's sheets might have come back with that. We're going to have several presentations, but I think we need to take a brief break to, and then we'll move into the presentations. Thank you. We have resumed our meeting, and we have several presentations. The first is Strategic Plan Update on Objectives Under Goal 3 and Goal 5. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Board members, this evening we have several presentations that staff will take you through. And we're going to start it off this evening with Chief Financial Officer Dennis Jarrett, who is going to lead us off with Goal 3A, Licensed Staff Compensation. He's also going to provide information and an update on Goal 5A, which is Allocation of Resources, and Goal 5B, which is Performance Measures for Finance. Mr. Jarrett?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Yeah, as you can see on the screen, the first one we're going to talk about is your Goal 3, which is Objective A, and it deals with licensed staff compensation. Now, who am I talking about when I talk about licensed staff? Talking about staff that are on the teacher pay plan. That includes teachers, media specialists, oh gosh, a couple, what's the other group?
ETFs.
Excuse me?
ETFs.
Yeah, ETFs, and there's a couple of other groups on that plan too. But it is, it is basically your staff that are serving students directly in a classroom. It does not include folks like principals, school board office staff, that, well, they may be licensed, but they're not considered licensed under the state code for this provision and under our pay plan. Now, Goal 3 speaks to, "The York County School Division will recruit, hire, retain, and support a diverse staff that meets our highest standards." That is the goal. The objective I'm going to be talking about tonight is the one that deals with the compensation package for licensed staff. And it reads, "The compensation package for licensed staff will move into the top three of the Hampton Roads comparator market of the nine school divisions by July 1, 2017, and will remain in the top three in subsequent years." Now, who are those Hampton Roads comparators? Those are Hampton, Newport News, Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Chesapeake, Suffolk, Williamsburg, James City County, okay? There's a total of eight plus York, so it makes a total of nine. So we are one of nine school divisions that we do our comparison with, those are our comparators. Now, if you look at your benchmark for this particular objective, what you did when you set this objective up several years ago as a part of your strategic plan, you benchmarked it. So you wanted to be at certain spots in certain fiscal years. So in FY14, you wanted to be ranked five or better, and FY15, you wanted to be ranked four or better, '16 ranked four or better, and of course, at the end of the strategic plan, you wanted to be at rank three or better. Now, for fiscal years 14 and 15, you have met that objective, ranked five in 14 and ranked four in 15. We talked about that in previous years. Now, what we're going to be talking about tonight is fiscal year '16, and how we look today relative to our pay plan and the other school divisions. Now, we will not be talking about FY17 tonight, because when you work on your budget this year, you're going to be working on the licensed pay plan for the following year, FY17, and that will be the last year of this benchmarking. So assuming we stay, if we stay on track, everything goes the way we would like it to, in FY17, hopefully you will have met your goal of ranked three or better. But we'll have to, time will tell on that one. Okay, one, this is a little bit of background information for you. When we go in and we do the comparison, we have to, if you will, bring the skills into a state in which they are comparable. And one of the issues that we've had in recent years has been the VRS shift. Now, as you recall, in fiscal year 13, the General Assembly required all school divisions, county, cities, and other political subdivisions to shift 5% of the VRS to the employee, and when they did that, when we did the shift, we had to increase the employee's pay by 1% as well. So what we did was, in fiscal year 13, a number of school divisions shifted a full 5%, and a number of them didn't either, we were one of those. So what we've done is, since fiscal year 15, is we've taken the pay scales that we get from local and other school divisions, and we adjust them for where they are on that VRS shift. Now, for this year, for fiscal year '16, there's only two school divisions that have not done the full done the full shift. That's Virginia Beach and Suffolk. They are at 4%. They are required by law next year to do the other 1%. But in order to make these scales compare, what we did was, we took Suffolk and Virginia Beach's pay scales, bumped them up 1%, because that's what they need to do in order to bring it up to the full five. Now, if we do that, we bring it in comparison with the other school divisions. So that's how we, we rank these, and in order to keep it comparable, keep the data, I guess, meaningful, if you will. Now, this next area is where we get into the actual ranking itself, and I want to explain this, this chart, so you get a better understanding of what's going on here. If you look at the pay lanes, these are the pay lanes that are in our pay schedule for teachers. We have, we have one pay lane for bachelors. What that means is, there's a beginning salary for, for a teacher that has a bachelor's degree, and there's an ending salary for that particular degree level. The same thing with the masters, and the same thing with masters plus 30, and the doctorate. So we have four pay lanes. Now, each one of those pay lanes has 31 steps. It starts at step zero, and it goes up to step 30. So a teacher has 31 steps to go to get to the very top of that. Now, when we do the rankings of these various steps on each pay lane, we take a look at each step for each school division. So we're looking at not just averages, we're not looking at beginning and midpoints and endpoints, we're looking at every step. So if you look at the next column, you'll see for FY, by the way, this is the first time we've had trend data since the VRS shift over, because last year, we converted the information to, for VRS. So we, we took people who hadn't done in VRS, upgraded the scales, make them comparable. So we have true comparative data now for fiscal year 15 and '16. So if you look at last year, the data that we presented, it showed that there were, in the bachelor's pay lane, there were 23 steps, or 74% of the steps on that particular pay lane, that met rank four or better. Okay? So 23 steps, that's not people, that's steps, on the 31-step scale, okay? And then, you had, on the masters, you had 24 steps that were seven, and that was 77%. That met the rank four or better. And then your masters plus 30, and your doctorate, all steps were rank four or better. This is last year's data. Now, let's look at fiscal year '16. This is, this is the current update on the benchmarking of the teacher pay plan. Okay? This year, you have all of your bachelor's steps at rank four or better. That is a significant increase. 26% of your steps moved up. Now, how did you do that? Well, I was, I was a little intrigued about that one, so I went back and I looked at some data that was provided from another group. And it appears that the average increase in scales last year was between a half of a percent and 1% across the state. So if we assume that's pretty much what happened in this region, you did a market adjustment last year for the teacher pay scale of .6. So if you say the average is a .5, you did a little bit better than the average, because that's how, that's one of the ways you were able to do better in the analysis. Because remember, last year, what you did was, you restored, you gave one current step, and you restored a step. That does nothing for the pay plan comparative. That really deals with internal equity between, about restored steps. So that is a real, I think that's a real accomplishment, to do that in a year when we were able to only do a .6% market adjustment to achieve those rankings. On the master's scale, we are at 28. We picked up four steps for 90%, and then we're at 100% still on the masters plus 30 and the doctorate. I, I don't think it's a stretch to say, you have clearly met your objective, your benchmark for FY16. In fact, I would say this is probably the strongest year that you've ever had in meeting that, these benchmarks. In the past, we've always had some, you know, 70%, 75%. I mean, you're well above that now. In fact, you've only got a few steps that are outside of the rank four or better. Now, another way to look at this is the number of staff, because remember, there are staff on each one of those steps of the, of the pay scale. So if you look at the number of staff and where they are relative to rank four or better, in 15, you'll see, bachelor's was 90, the masters was 90%, and the masters and the masters 30 were 100%. So what that says is, at the bachelor's level, in terms of the actual staff and where they're located, we had 90% of our staff at rank four or better in fiscal year 15. Now, let's go over to FY16. You can see that, as far as staff goes, we are 100% under the bachelor's pay lane. So even though there may be certain steps on that pay lane that aren't at rank four or better, the people that are on whatever steps are on are on steps that are on rank four or better. So I think, again, this just speaks to, I think it's very clear that we have met this objective for FY16 of being ranked four or better. Any questions on this one before I move to the next slide?
Great recruiting tool.
Well, I, I have to say, this really is. I mean, because, but one thing we do have to always remember, competency or salary is one component in trying to recruit, recruit and retain staff. It's one component. You know, staff are looking at other things. They're looking at the work environment. They're looking at the community in which they, they work. They're looking at the benefit piece. They look at a lot of different things. This is one component, and you have done a tremendous job in this component of making it very attractive for folks when they look at, you know, they're looking at coming to York County to teach.
Especially a new teacher coming out of college, they, they're really zeroing in on that base salary. You know, yes, they do look at benefits and other things you mentioned, obviously, but a lot of them look just right at who's offering what, what's my starting salary going to be? They see us as ranked in the top four, and then they look at all the other things that wrap everything around that. We're competitive.
Yeah. It, it, we clearly are very competitive, and I'll show you some other information in a second.
Mr. Jarrett. Rank of four or better. I'm looking at all of these figures, and it seems like we truly are like third, second, and possibly first in most of these.
And many of them, we are. We are. And it's interesting you bring that up, because when I was looking at the data, there are also some areas where we have a pretty good gap between rank four and rank three. And that's what I think is going to be one of the challenges as we move into the FY17 budget process, because your goal is to be ranked three or better next year. The scale itself is going to require some adjustment to, because the assumption is, other locale, other school divisions in our comparative group will do something with their scales. So if we don't, there's a very good chance that we will not be able to achieve rank three or better. So your, your point is well taken. But we are, in some areas, already at two and three, especially on the, the masters plus 30 scale. We are a very competitive group when it comes to that one. Make no mistake about that. So, yeah, but I think we, we don't want to let up, because I believe very strongly that rank three or better, which is your ultimate goal, that's where you want to be, and you want to stay there, we're going to have to make some improvements in the pay plan in order to make that happen next year.
It's going to be ongoing. Every year, we always have to look and see what our competitors are paying the teachers.
And that is why we do this, because we, if we don't, we can get blindsided, because all it takes is one year. This happened a few years ago. Mrs. Haywood can probably remember, Portsmouth City Schools, they used to be one of the worst pay scales around. Now, they're one of the best. They had a couple of years where they put an emphasis on the pay plan, and now they are basically one of the best pay plans out there.
I'm jumping ahead a little bit, and I, and I say that because I've gone back now to look at our goal statement. So as we look to the future and to retreat and try to recruit our goals, that probably will stay the same versus changing from a three to a four, whatever. Just to continue with progress, probably that one is.
Yes, especially, especially if we are able to achieve rank three or better, unless you want to change that to be better than rank three, which, you know, I, my personal feeling is, I don't think you have to be the best, the very best, but I think if you're in the top tier, I think that really says a lot right there. So yes, ma'am, you very well could be leading this right where it is. I do want to point out, too, that, and I mentioned this earlier, but what we're looking at right here is what's termed external equity. So we're comparing to our external comparators, our competitors, if you will. What we're not talking about here is internal equity. And I want to make sure that everyone understands that this does nothing to deal with the issue of compression that we have in this division. I mean, it's, it's well, we've talked about it extensively. Compression is essentially this. We've, we held back, we did not provide five steps for all staff for five years. We restored one of those steps this year, so now we've got four steps yet to restore. So what that means is, we have compression in that. We have staff members that have worked here four more years than another staff person on the same step. Okay? And so, and that's, that's a different issue than what we're talking, we're talking pay scales here. But that is, I don't want that to get lost in this, because that is a, that's a separate issue that we have to continue to work on.
I'm glad you made that distinction, because the board knows about the problems that this school division has with compression because of the pay freeze. The public may not. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, you're welcome. I mean, that's, and that's really been the focus, that was the focus of your budget this year, was restoring those steps. And I think it's going to continue to be a focus. I understand y'all's comments in the past on that. I want to take you to another spot right now. This is a, some new data. This chart, I apologize for the busyness of it, but I've had, our communications department has worked on this, our technology department has worked on it, and this is what we ended up with. Okay, what, what we did was, we took, the Virginia Education Association produced a comparative study of salaries across the state. They did a survey of all school divisions, and 125 school divisions responded to that survey. What the VEA did was, they took that, so salary scale data back, and they did their own analysis. And the way they did it, they looked at steps, they looked at the step on zero years of experience, five years, 10 years, 15, 20, 25, and 30. So they took the 125 pay scales that they had, and they said, okay, what is your pay scale for the bachelor's degree at those different years of, of service levels? They did that for all the BA and the MA scale, because there are different scales out there that different school divisions use. That's two common, very common ones that are used across the state. So they looked at those two pay scales. If you look up, and this is just a visual, I mean, it's, the visual, I think, says it all. We are this dark line right there. So if, and these are our comparators. So Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Virginia Beach, Williamsburg, James City County, and then us. If you look at this, I mean, we are, right now, based on those salary scales, we're sitting pretty well. I mean, very competitive. I feel like that the, the pay plan is really where you wanted it to be. Again, we don't want to say we've achieved everything we wanted to do, because we haven't. But at least it speaks to the work that you guys have done as a board over the last four years, in working with this teacher salary schedule. Dr. Shandor has worked with it for, for a year now. So, I mean, we've made significant progress, and I think everyone deserves a pat on the back, and I think we should all be proud of where we are with this teacher pay plan. It's something that, I, I will tell you, all of these other districts down here, they're probably saying to themselves, well, I wish I was up there. I mean, I think it really does say something to the commitment about, about the organization, and where you prioritize. Because I would also remind you that for the, those years where the economic picture for this division was not very rosy, in fact, we were losing money. We lost over $10 million in state revenue. You did not lower the pay plan for licensed staff or non-licensed staff, and there are some folks in our region that did, in fact, do that. So I mean, again, I think it speaks to your commitment to compensation.
I think it's important, too, Dennis, for you to have visuals like this, because I think for the community that sometimes will hear a comment, or read a story, or have a discussion with someone about, you know, people are leaving our division because they're being paid more in other divisions, or, and things. But when you take a snapshot, look at this in the general term, so we go, people are chasing us, they're trying to catch us, and when you look at 100% of, of our staff, if not, you know, the entire staff, of the licensed staff, are in the top four, sometimes you can make you step back a little bit and think, okay, the comment was made, but we're in a really good position to say, we are, we're really hard with this compensation. We brought every green end, did a lot of work, redid the pay, pay plan for teachers, our licensed staff, and this is what we've been able to achieve over the years. Now we can play catch-up on the compression issue, like you talked about, but this is, this is good stuff.
It, it is, and, and I don't want to minimize the, the importance of the compression issue. It's one that we know about, and it's one that you guys are focused on, and I know it's frustrating for staff, because, you know, they're out there and they're thinking, okay, I'm on step one, and I've been here for five years, and somebody's been here for one year on step one. I mean, it's frustrating for them. But what's important is, you're addressing it, you're looking at it every year, and you're doing what you can to make progress on that. And I think you're exactly right. I think it's, it's the awareness piece. People need to be aware of what's going on.
And one last thing, and that is, I know we're concentrating these discussions at this point on license, but we have just as many of our non-licensed side of the house that we have to make sure that we are looking at something very similar, I would think, in my mind, as we move forward, because that's another group of employees we have that we really know that we have compression issues with that, and we also have, we want to be a competitive group, so the non-licensed.
Yes, sir. I think it's true, it's definitely true, a picture's worth a thousand words. It is, it is. And, you know, and we struggled with the presentation on this because of the lines, but, but in the final analysis, what we, by darkening that line, we felt like you would get the message with that. So I'm glad that worked out. And of course, this is what the MA scale looks like. Again, very strong, very strong. And, and the top, the top leaders, it appears, are Virginia Beach, Portsmouth, York County, and I think Chesapeake was up here, too. So, so we're, we're amongst some, some good divisions out there that have, have also, that, that are chasing us at this point, and to a large extent, we were chasing them a few years ago. Any other questions on the licensed pay plan analysis before I close, close out on this? I, I do want to make one other comment, I talked about this earlier, and that is the challenge for next year with the pay plan, and that is, because your objective next year is to be in the top third. So that's something we've got to be cognizant of as we go through this budget process, and doing what we can to achieve that. Because if we don't, Mrs. Haywood, you're exactly right, I think what's going to have to happen, that's going to have to go back into the, to your new strategic plan, and whether it start out on step four, or rank four, or rank three, that'll be a decision you guys will have to make. Okay, I have two other goals that I want to just take a couple of minutes to go over with you. The first one is allocation of resources. This is Goal Five, and it's actually Objective A. And again, this is the Goal Five deals with, the school division will maintain efficient, effective, service-oriented operations that support student achievement in safe, secure environments. And the first objective was, resources will be allocated to maximize student achievement. Annual budget documents will include qualitative and qualitative information pertaining to how the allocation of resources maximizes student achievement. Okay, there are a number of areas that we've looked at in this, and I want to, I want to highlight a few of those. The first one is budget reductions during the period of FY10 through FY15. They were all made to strategically maximize student achievement. How do we know this? We know this by our test results. All you have to do is take a look at our SOL test results and other benchmarks that they use. We are, we are one of the top in the region. And this kind of leads us to, a little bit, to the second item, which is instructional expenditures were reduced in fiscal year 10, 11, 12, and 15, less than expenditures in the school board office and in operations and maintenance. I want you to think about that for a minute. Our instruction piece of the budget is the most significant part of our budget, yet their expenditures were reduced less than those other areas. So Dr. James has felt this significantly, Dr. Guy's felt it, a number of places have felt it. But it's, it's the way you achieved what you did, and so, and it's paid off in terms of student achievement and in terms of maximizing our resources. In the fiscal year 10, 11, 12, and 15, and 16 budgets, you did not eliminate any field teaching positions. Okay? Now, you'll note that I don't have up there fiscal year 13 and 14 on that bullet, and that's because you weren't able to do that those two years. We've gotten to a point where we had to go into the instructional staff, and so, during those years, you did reduce a number of teaching positions, but in almost all, probably 95% to 98% of all the positions you cut in that six-year period, which was about 160%. about 160 positions, not teachers, but I'm talking about all the positions together, you cut about 160. You didn't do, you did all of those for the most part by attrition. No one was told they didn't have a job. There were a couple of situations where there was, there was no other way to do that. But the vast majority of them were all done by attrition. You, in FY16, you started regrouping. That's the year we're in now. The state came out with additional funds, and you were able to add four teaching positions and two occupational therapists in the current year. So this year really marked a turning point for you guys. You are able now to start looking at, okay, how can we start trying to recoup some of those reductions that we've made in the past? You've not really, honestly, you've probably not made a dent in it yet because you haven't had the funds to work with, but it's going to be a continual thing that we'll look at every year as, as we go through the budgets. The, this is a really important one, this one dealing with the adopted budgets from FY10 through FY16 included the staffing required to meet the class size objectives set forth in your strategic plan. I think this is another one of those you can, you can take credit for because there are a lot of school divisions in this state that are staffing at the SOQ levels. We staff well below the SOQ levels. And so what that means is we have a better student-teacher ratio than many of our colleagues. I'm talking about many of our colleagues in this region. And you did that by not cutting instruction and cutting other areas. Okay? So again, that's, that's, that is an important consideration as we look at how we allocated resources. And then I talk about there are other quantitative and qualitative items in the budget, and there are, and I just want to show you one. This is called the academic efficiency of dollars spent. Now, this particular item is one that's actually required, you know, we participate in the Budget Awards Program for ASBO. Well, they require that we come up with a metric or series of metrics that evaluates academic efficiency of dollars spent. This is what we came up with, and they've accepted this. We've been using this for several years. What we do is we're comparing our per pupil expenditure, which is up here, to some of our student performance data, first being the English SOL, math SOLs, and then the graduation rate. Now, I want you to know, this is FY14 data. The reason it's 14 data, I wanted to make sure we used the, the same year for all of this. So if you look at the per pupil expenditures, that is the latest year that Department of Education has published per pupil expenditures for the, for the state. They will come out with the new one for FY15 in about another month. But right now, this is all they have. So I used the same fiscal year for all of this. Now, I, but I can tell you that the, the performance rankings for SOLs and graduation rate is the same ranking. They've already done this in instruction for those areas. So we know we're still ranked, ranked one on all of those. But if you look at this, you'll see that your county, on a per pupil expenditure basis, we are second to last. We're spending second to last in this region to educate our students on a per pupil basis. And yet, look at our scores. We are at the top of the tier of our comparator group in English SOLs, math SOLs, and the graduation rate. So you're getting a tremendous bang for your dollar in your county when you start comparing what we spend and the results you're getting. And I, and so this graph, I think this chart right here really sums up that whole goal or objective dealing with allocation of resources. Any questions on this before I move on to the next one? Okay?
It's nice to see that where you're ranked first.
It is, it is. And I, I, this is one of the, one of the charts that I am, I'm really proud to have in our, I actually have it in a budget two places. I'm so proud of this chart. If you, it's actually in the first part, which is what we call the budget summary. Then I have it back in the, in the statistical section because if anybody looks at this thing in any one of those sections, they'll see that. So I, I think it's an important chart to keep out there in people's forefront. Now, the last area I'm going to look at is still in goal five, but this is the objective B, and it deals with performance measures for the finance department. And I'm just going to take you through a couple of those. I want to highlight the, these first two bullets, these are general ones. And let, let me first say about performance measurements. One might ask, why do we even measure? Why do we care? Why do we want to know whether or not we are performing at a high level versus a mediocre level? It's important because the better we perform, that means the more resources that we can put over to instruction. So this is, has a direct relation to what we were talking about earlier about putting resources in the instructional department. So if Dr. James's custodial group is operating at a high efficiency rate, if the finance department's operating at a high efficiency rate, Dr. Guy's group, Dr. Carol's group, all the, if they're all operating at a high efficiency rate, then the assumption is low dollars are going into those areas, and those dollars are being shifted over to instruction. And so that's the intent of having performance measures to make sure that we're doing the best we can to achieve that goal. And the first two, they're a qual, by the way, they're a qualitative and quantitative measures for finance. And, but the first two are really qualitative that I want to talk about. It's the, the unqualified and audit opinions on our comprehensive annual financial report and unqualified audit opinion on our student activity fund statements. This is, this is a very important thing, and it's one that again, that I feel like that as a school division, I would not be, I wouldn't accept anything less than this, and I don't think you would either. And so it's, it's something that we, we work hard at doing, and we've achieved that. In fact, I, as a school division, we have not received any management comments in years on our, our CAFR report, which is a positive thing. Then I want to take you over to a couple more. If you look at the, this is in the accounting area. We process all payments within 10, 10 business days of receipt in accounts payable office. Out of about almost 5,000 payments, this goal was met 100% of the time. And one of the reasons we do this is number one, we want to have good relations with our vendors. Number two, if we can get an early payment discount, we want to take advantage of that too. And then scrolling on down, this is one that people don't think a whole lot about. Yes, this one right here. All previous year federal grants at a zero balance by September 30th. And what that means is this, and we get a sizable amount of federal grants, Title I, Title II, Title 6B, some DOD grants, a number of different areas. They all have expiration dates on them. Most of them are tied to the federal fiscal year, which is September 30th. We have spent every dollar in those grants on September 30th, so we turn no money back to the federal government. Now, I know one might say, well, is that a good thing? Maybe we should be turning money back. Well, we look at it differently. We look at it, well, if we have the ability to access and use those resources in this division to hire staff, to buy equipment, to buy, access technology, whatever, we can do with those dollars, we want to use them. So that is a real positive thing, and there have been situations where some school divisions have not achieved that, and they get criticized for it because they've left money on the table, if you will. So that's not been our problem here. We'd like to get more. Then looking on down to, this is an internal one dealing with P cards. I always have trouble finding this one on here. Here it is. Each month, a sampling of P card holders will be internally audited. We, we have P cards that we use in this division, and there's over 100 folks that have those allocated. And to make sure people are using those correctly and to make sure we have due diligence taking place on how they're being used, we go out, we do internal audits on those, and we try to do every card at least once a year. We haven't been able to achieve that every year, but many of the years we have been. And that, again, is just another way that we do to make sure the taxpayers' resources are being used in a judicious manner. And then the last one I want to point out to you is under payroll. It says first bullet. Their, their goal is to maintain a 98 to 100% accuracy rate in processing payroll checks. We process a lot of payroll checks during the year, almost 37,000 of those. And I call them checks, they're really not checks, what they are is EFT payments because we pay, we don't, we don't do checks anymore. You either get paid either electronically or you get paid using the pay card. But if you look at this, look at these accuracy rates that the payroll office has, 99.95% in administration. And it goes on down. What this means is we value the work that people are doing in the division, and we want to make sure they get paid correctly. Because there's nothing worse than for an employee to work all month, and they get their paycheck, and they see they've been paid wrong, there's deduction wrong or something like that. You can destroy any credibility you have right there. So we really make a concerted effort to make sure that doesn't happen. Now, there are a total of 38 performance measures that I'm not, I'm finished going over the ones I'm going to go over, but feel free to look through those on your own time. And if you have any questions, please give me a call. Are there any questions on any of this?
Board members have questions.
Mr. Derek.
Yes.
The prompt payments to the vendors, sometimes there's substantial returns if we make those happen.
There can be, there can be. Yes, yes indeed. Yeah, there's, there's, I find, I find that there's fewer of those in the public arena than there are in the private arena. And I'll tell you why. There's a, there's a state law called the Prompt Payment Act, and it requires public entities to pay their bills within 30 days. So there's not as big of a incentive if you're a vendor to offer that incentive because you know you're going to pay in 30 days. Whereas if you're a private business and you're dealing with that vendor, they might not experience that same quickness and turnaround of their payments, so they might offer a better discount in that regard.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, yes, sir. And, but, but we try to, we try to monitor that, and, and when we take advantage of it, we do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Derek. We're going to move on to our next presentation. Mr. Greg Dolek, who's our Associate Director of Maintenance and Facility Support, he's going to provide updates on Objective 5B performance measures. Dr. James, are you going to drive?
Thank you. Mrs. Haywood, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, I would like to take some time to talk to you about Objective in Goal Five, Efficiency and Safety that addresses performance measures. Operations departments, including information technology, transportation and vehicle maintenance, building maintenance, custodial services, and human resources, use the performance measures to enhance the quality of the services we provide to support the instructional program. Before you, it's a spreadsheet with the full listing of the performance measures from the operations areas. This evening, I will highlight some of the measures within the complete list. The first area of discussion is transportation and vehicle maintenance. The two measures are total operating cost per exclusive student mile and bus road breakdowns per 100,000 student miles. Exclusive student miles pertains to students with disabilities that receive special transportation. In total operating costs, you will notice a slight fluctuation over the three-year average. This is driven mainly by the cost of fuel, parts, and employee compensation. In the second measure, bus road breakdowns, you will notice a decrease. Factors that can affect this measure are an increase in the bus replacement schedule for 12 to 14 years, an increase in the cost of parts and repairs, as well as our ability to repair buses in the field, so toning is not required. Our next area is custodial services and building maintenance. The two measures we will discuss are total annual cost per 100,000 building square feet and percentage of safety work orders accomplished within three working days. In the first measure, you will notice a decrease over the three-year average. This can be attributed to an increase in overall building square footage from recent additions and nearly level funding, as well as extended life of product application. In the next measure, safety work orders, there is a slight decrease in the completion rate. As we continue to focus on safety issues, we'll continue to address security needs as they arise. Factors affecting a longer completion period are availability of parts, developing new solutions, and workloads at any point in time. In all cases, the concerns are assessed immediately and rendered safe for students and staff until a final repair can be made. The next area is network administration. This encompasses all of the wired and wireless networks and the management of the servers and storage of data. The first measure, wireless devices connecting to the network on any given day, has increased in its second year of measurement. With the increase in wireless device usage, we will continue to monitor these problems. The last measure, user documents and files stored, has increased from last year. This is significant because as the number of documents and files saved rise, additional storage space will be required to meet the demand. Our next area this evening is computer maintenance. This is the maintenance and repair of the division's computer hardware, including computers, monitors, LCD projectors, printers, document cameras, VCRs, wireless keyboards and mice, in addition to resolution of software issues through technicians at the computer help desk. I am pleased to report that the IT department continues to resolve a high percentage of issues on the same day the issue is reported, with a significant increase over last year. This maximizes the opportunity for students and teachers to utilize technology in the instructional program. Issues that can't be resolved in one day are often caused by aging equipment or equipment that needs to be returned to the manufacturer. While discussing computer maintenance, care must be taken to ensure the system infrastructure is maintained and regularly updated as servers, hubs, and switches are subject to failure with age. Our final measure this evening is energy management. You will notice a decrease in the cost of electricity per 1,000 student square feet. This is affected by the actual cost per kilowatt hour, as well as changes in the weather patterns. Usage of electricity, a decrease was experienced. Finally, electricity cost avoidance increased over last year. Electric, electricity cost avoid, electrical cost avoidance is a measure of funds not spent based on reduction efforts employed by the division. Examples such as geothermal HVAC systems, occupancy scheduling, internal and external LED lighting retrofits, and HVAC upgrades have resulted in savings. The division continues to look for savings in all areas possible. Thank you for your time this evening. Once again, please refer to the complete operations and performance measure spreadsheet for further information. Are there any questions?
Questions, anybody? Thank you.
Fantastic information.
It is, it is.
Behind the scenes things that really matter when it comes to dollars sometimes.
All right, our next presentation, board members, is going to be Mr. Doug Mead, Director of Information Technology. He's going to provide information under Objective 5D, which is customer service surveys. Mr. Mead?
Good evening, Mrs. Haywood, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. Dr. Shandor just told you what I was going to talk about, so I don't need to talk about that slide. This is the annual customer satisfaction surveys. So there's actually two surveys that I'm going to talk to you about. The first one we call the operations survey. This survey goes out to principals, assistant principals, and high school athletic directors. It is, it is a small survey in that it's only four or five questions per group, but lots of the, all of the operations groups and including human resources are represented in that survey. So there were a few questions for transportation, for maintenance, for custodial services, for school administration, for IT and HR. It has a five-point scale with five being the best. There are only 50 employees in this pool, and it is sent to 100% of those employees, all 50 get in. But only 27, 54 of them completed the survey. Now, I'm not a statisticians, but you can calculate what your margin of error is based on the number of people who respond to a survey. And this survey had a very high rate of error, plus or minus 12.8%. That's more than a half a point, plus or minus, on any one of these bar graphs that you're going to see. So keep that in mind, that there's, it's difficult to follow trends in a survey when you have that high of a margin of error. And one of our goals for next year is to make the survey mandatory. There's just no reason why we can't get 50 people to respond to a, to a survey.
Excuse me, but I was going to ask this. This is a survey that should be taken by the principals and assistant principals. I feel like they should be answering your questions.
And next year, they'll be held captive till, so we can have that. We're going to actually do that in a meeting next year, so we meet with the principals once a month. So one of our meetings next year, we'll hold them captive so that they can take this. This feedback is critical to our success in every department. We want the feedback, good or bad, positive or negative, we want that feedback and support. So, but we'll let Mr. Mead get through his presentation.
Thank you. So we're just going to start off with school administration. And once again, with the margin of error in this survey, none of, all those bar graphs are the same. There's just no way you can tell one thing from another. But I, I did a little bit of digging into the numbers and thought this might help with a, bit of a word of explanation. So the problem when you have such a high margin of error, one particular response has a huge effect. If you look at courtesy at 3.92, if one person had changed the way they had rated courtesy, that would be 4.04. It, it just throws the survey back and forth wildly. And in fact, of the 25 people who responded to those three questions, 20 of them were very satisfied. So it was three or four people that throw the que, throw the category off. So I think that helps put that in perspective of what you're seeing. But again, there are three or four people out But again, there are three or four people out there of the 27 that were not happy, and we want to make everyone happy. So we have things that we're going to look to do that we can continue with next steps. Provide professional development in leadership training, provide more situations, scenarios, training for the administrators, and update the administrators on policies, procedures, and protocols to help them better understand. Maintenance, again, no changes there within any of the margin of error. Again, with a plus or minus .51 margin of error. Just clicking through, we have two sets of slides on maintenance, talking about their quality of work, problem solving, accessibility. Custodial Services, Pest Control and Knowledge. We are a little surprised about Pest Control and Knowledge this year, given that we now have a contractor who's actually doing this. So we fully expected that to go up, but for whatever reason, it didn't. But we actually have a contractor who's now taking over for Pest Control. But again, with, to the extent that we can learn from the data, we're gonna continue to review it, work order database, anecdotal information. The information any of the departments get from talking with people in the buildings is always different from the way this particular survey looks. Research areas of improvement, how to make ourselves more efficient, and share building-specific data with the principals, so they know more about what's going on in their individual buildings. Transportation. And if there is anything that we can learn from the data, the one, the one challenge that transportation continues to suffer from is a shortage of bus drivers. There is just a shortage of bus drivers, and when people want to go places, people want their students arriving on time and leaving on time and arriving home on time, and you don't have people who drive the buses, they're not going to be happy. And that's, that's a reality. So transportation continues to look at their recruitment strategies, school events, book fairs, open house nights, other things that they can do at the schools, other community events such as military festivals and job fairs. If you know somebody who would like to be a school bus driver, or if you just think you're content with being a school bus driver, transportation would be very happy to talk to you. So Information Technology, a subject near and dear to me. And I, I'm, we have a slight advantage in this because Information Technology actually does two surveys. We have five questions in the administrative survey, but we also do a survey because our customer base is pretty much every employee in the division. So we actually do a larger, more, a more widespread survey, and it's gonna be, I think it'll be interesting for you to see. But you can see what the trends there are, basically down in every category this year, and lots and lots of threes. So taking that in mind, we continue to train our technical staff on empathy and customer service. We provide improved opportunities for them to reach support. For instance, this year with our new VoIP telephone system, we place the telephones on the I-station so teachers don't have the phone on the wall, the computer in the corner, can't talk to somebody while they're sitting at their computer for help. Trying to make ourselves more accessible, give them ways to reach out to us. And we, of course, continue to focus our resources during critical times, such as SOL testing and on the other high-stakes testing. All right, so we do this second survey. This survey, there's 1,470 employees in the pool. We sent it to 560, and we get 231 who respond. 41% responded, that's a 16% of the population. This survey has a plus or minus 5.9% margin of error, much smaller margin of error. In fact, it's plus or minus less than a quarter of a point on each one of those categories. They're the same five questions. Now, we are down ever so slightly in a couple of those, but we're also up in some of them, and they're all in the fours. So significantly different than the survey where just 27 people are responding. And this survey, again, is more extensive, it asks additional questions. Satisfaction with our help desk has continued to show steady improvement. With our computer technicians, overall steady improvement. Satisfaction with our virtual desktop infrastructure improvement, wireless, wireless environment, and supportive SOL testing all show steady improvement. Now, this is where we separate out just those in the survey who identified as teachers. And we asked if it makes their work life easier, if it's, if it's changing the way they provide instruction, if it's a way they're assigning work to students, and how they appreciate being able to bring BYOT in. And you can see in every one of those cases, teachers are telling us, yes, 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 and yes. Teachers are still not quite there with BYOT for students. I will tell you, though, that that really was not much of a change as far as those teachers who agreed or strongly agreed from last year. There was a shift, though, from those who were neutral to a less of a, to more of a disagree. But those that were appreciating it are still appreciating it consistently. And I think some of the comments that the teachers give us are really telling. I love using Citrix from my home computer and not having to transport a school-issued laptop back and forth like my spouse, who teaches in an unnamed school division, has to do. The general education technology setting is well-equipped with technology. I like the easy access, and I love that it's available to everyone. Accountability is easily enforced. Students who miss assignments in class can easily catch themselves up due to my post. So what we're doing with technology, I think, is really helping our teachers be better teachers and do their job. And with that, do you have any questions?
Questions?
Just a comment, I do think Citrix is wonderful, I think that's a big plus the school division has.
Thank you very much.
Come a long way, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Mead.
Sorry?
All right, we have two more presentations. Next presentation is gonna be Dr. Jim Carroll, who is gonna, he's our Chief Human Resource Officer. He's gonna present an update on the customer service surveys as well. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Human Resources conducted similar surveys this fall. We will start with the survey to division administrators and athletic directors. However, before reviewing our results, it is important to understand our department context this past year. We experienced a leadership change. Four additional employees moved out of the department, and after filling those slots, we had some internal changes. This all while having a couple of extended employee leaves. With that said, our results are mixed, but mostly just slightly down. However, ratings on confidentiality are virtually the same as last year, and courtesy, where we put emphasis last year, showed again. Where we had dips in knowledge and accuracy of information could be a function of new people and new positions. As far as the slight customer service dip, the verbatim comments revealed some disappointments with information from our, from our retirees that were related to administrators. We had one key staff member out during the end of the school year. And despite much advertising about contingencies during that time, we were aware of some disappointed retirees. The issue with availability of information, which was our lowest score, is clearly tied to weaknesses in the information provided on our website and internet. For the larger survey, again, our survey was distributed like the operations survey, but with a different sampling. Our respe, our response rate was 46%, which gave you a plus or minus 5.1% margin for error, which equates to plus or minus .2 points. The results here are similar to other surveys, but with less, to the other survey, but with less variation. Once again, the clearest indication of weakness lies in availability of information, which is the focus of our next steps. So our next steps are that we have, some of them we have already initiated, including sending our licensure specialist to all schools for recertification counseling, so that we have more face-to-face interaction. The planned improvements to our website and internet that we've already mentioned are already underway. We are beginning to plan retirement sessions in schools and departments for the spring, and making improvements to the benefits orientation for new employee and teacher orientations. And that concludes my section, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Sophia.
Okay, our final presentation of the evening, well, at least for the strategic plan of interest tonight. Dr. Catherine Jones, Director of School Administration, is gonna present an update on the objective relating to staff supporting safe and secure educational environments. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Good evening, Haywood, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. As Dr. Shandor said, I will continue with the update on the Goal 5 of the Strategic Plan. Under Goal 5, Efficiency and Safety, one of the objectives is that staff will support safe, secure educational environments. To that end, the Department of Operations has consistently collaborated with the Assistant County Attorney, Law Enforcement, and Fire and Life Safety in developing and presenting topics for safety to administrators, teachers, substitute teachers, and custodians. The presentations included National Incident Management System, school law updates, and the 800 megahertz radio. We have also collaborated with community resources from Riverside Behavioral Health Center on mental health issues. Workplace safety, energy management, badges and security, and blood-borne pathogens are other topics that have been presented to staff to ensure a safe and efficient environment for students. Moreover, in case of emergencies, our students and staff are well-prepared as drills are practiced regularly with law enforcement and fire and life safety. Also, in ensuring a safe environment for our students, a school safety inspection is completed annually with law enforcement, maintenance staff, and the safety and compliance officer for all division schools. The inspection covers the exterior as well as the interior of the building, and work orders that need to be written are completed after the inspection. In addition to the school safety inspection, a playground inspection is conducted monthly at each elementary school by the safety and compliance officer to ensure that there are no hazards. There are also building inspections conducted during the year by the Chief Operations Officer, the safety and compliance officer, and maintenance staff. The interior and exterior of the buildings are reviewed. The walkthroughs determine if additional work orders are required. This picture depicts the proper storage of ladders in the mechanical equipment room. Additionally, to ensure the safety of students who walk to school, crossing guards are in place. There are crossing guards at Bethel Manor, Coventry, Dare, Mount Vernon, and Tad Mittel. Crossing guards are trained by the staff in transportation. Please note that students must have written permission from parents and the approval of the school to walk from neighborhoods in which transportation is provided. As part of the HVAC replacement and partial roof replacement project at McGruder Elementary, an existing wall between the main office and the main school entrance was removed, and a glass door front and two doors were installed to provide a clear view of people entering and exiting the building. A security vestibule was also created with a second set of electronically-controlled doors to prevent people from entering the building without checking in at the main office. Additional benefits are that less heat or air conditioning is lost from the building, and visitors proceed directly to the main office. We are in the process of evaluating the feasibility and cost of installing more security vestibules at school entrances. A security vestibule is being designed as part of the Yorktown and Bethel Manor Elementary CIP projects with thanks to our. The gymnasium breezeways were enclosed to enhance student safety at McGruder, Seaford, and Coventry Elementary Schools. Students no longer need to exit the main buildings and cross covered sidewalks to reach the gymnasiums. Additional benefits are that students are not subjected to the weather when going to the gym. There is less heat or air conditioning loss due to the repeated opening of the exterior doors, and office staff no longer are interrupted to remotely unlock the doors to allow entrance. The only two schools remaining that need to have the breezeway enclosed are Dare and Mount Vernon. They are both in the CIP to be enclosed in FY18. And lastly, the Bullying Prevention Committee met in December. The committee consists of parents, students, teachers, and administrators. Topics of discussion were policy, procedures, protocol, and prevention. And may I add that we are having a meeting on Friday to look at planning of policy. And this concludes the updates for Goal 5, Efficiency and Safety. Are there any questions?
Board members have questions?
A question about the bullying prevention. What do you see, or what, what could you bring back to us as far as information from the December meeting? How do you see this committee moving forward with real policy change to affect any allegations of bullying in our schools?
What we did was to look at what we think needs to be in place, and we put together an outline. We looked at definitions, we looked at interventions, we looked at preventions. And we're going to, on Friday, look at what research-based projects are already out there and that we can implement into our school division. So I think we'll have a pretty good start.
Presenting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
So that concludes our first presentation.
Strategic, Strategic Plan.
Yes, yes. And so now we'll move to the FY16 Expected Budget.
Yep, so we're gonna go to Mr. Garrett. Mr. Garrett's gonna provide an update on FY16, followed by the FY17 Proposed Budget Outlook. So we're gonna spend a little bit of time with Mr. Garrett.
Okay, first thing we're gonna talk about is the FY16 Expected Budget. And the information is included on four docs for you. And I just wanted to take a couple minutes to highlight what we've got going on here. As you know, every year, we have to modify the expect, the current budget we're in. Some years, it's more items to modify than other years. This year, it's got a whole lot of changes going on. Two of the most significant changes are two federal grants we recently got. One was the DoDEA Grant for Literacy. That's a five-year grant, and it's for a million and a half dollars. And so this is the first part of that. So if you look at, the only change on the revenue side, you'll see is on the federal dollars. And that is going up under the Expected Budget by $380,500. And if you go down to this footnote, you'll see what that's comprised of. That is the DoDEA Literacy Grant for $305,000. And then we also got a grant from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration for $75,000. That's also, I believe that's a three-year grant. And both of these grants are, are funds that were not originally projected for. So they were funds that came in after the budget was approved, so we wanna go ahead and include those in the Expected Budget for next year, or for this year, rather. And then if you go down to the expenditures, and those are, that, by the way, is the only change on the revenue side. And on the expenditure side, you'll see there's a couple of notes related to that. And first thing we had to do was go in and adjust the categories for those two grants, okay? For the DoD Grant and the NOAA Grant. Then we also had to adjust the expenditures for any FTEs that were placed in different programs and where they were budgeted. Let me give you an example of that. I was looking at our Expected Budget this afternoon, and I saw where we had moved third-grade teachers to the first grade, okay? There was a couple of teachers that were moved from third to first. So in our program budget, we have a program for third grade, we have a program for first grade. So when that happens, we have to move the FTE and move the dollars associated with those FTEs. So all of those changes are incorporated in this as well. We also had to adjust for the health and dental insurance, because every year, people make different decisions. Some people come on, some people come off. So where those funds actually land in the program budgets is we have to make modifications for that. And we also had to make modification in administration, because she'll notice the administration budget is up $223,000. And that's just related to some litigation issues that have taken place in the division over the past year or so. So those are the only changes that are right now in the FY16 Expected Budget. You will get a detailed review of all of this when you get the Superintendent's Proposed Budget for FY17, because there'll be a separate column in that for the Expected Budget. So you'll see the detail-by-line item in that. And then you won't actually approve this or consider approving this until your March meeting, when you approve the FY17 budget as well. Moving on along, Dr. Shandor, you wanna go on to 17?
Sure, FY17, yes, the Governor's FY17 proposed budget is the impact on our school division.
Yeah, let's look at, this is a look at what the Governor, well, let me first say, the Governor released his budget for FY17 on December the 17th, okay? And that budget is a two-year budget. He, it's just his first budget that he's proposing for the biennium. Last biennium, he was, he inherited the budget from the previous Governor, okay? This is his first budget that he's actually proposed. And, and it is for fiscal years 17 and 18. So I'm gonna make a few comments, really about, several comments about FY17, and then a couple of comments about FY18 as well. several comments about FY17, and then a couple of comments about FY18 as well. But if you look at it up at the top, you'll see that this is based on the enrollment projection that we got from the county planner, which is 12,620. The composite index is projected at .3905. And you may not recall, but when we first talked about this in December, it was .3904. Since then, the state has modified it just a little bit to .3905. Very, very minor modification to that, okay? If you take a look at it, what I did was I looked at all of the major line items of revenue, and I compared them to the FY16 budget that we're operating under now to what the governor has proposed for FY17. And I'm showing you the difference, the increase in dollars and percent for each of those line items. I want you to note that FY17 dollars include the re-benchmarking, okay? We all, you're familiar with the re-benchmarking that the General Assembly does every two years. And so these numbers do, in fact, include that. So you go down, and you'll see there's an increase projected in sales tax. Basic aid is projected to go up. Special ed, excuse me, compensation supplement. There is, the governor has proposed no salary increase for teachers or support staff for FY17. I can tell you that that was probably the most disappointing thing when I reviewed the governor's budget, that I was really hopeful that something was going to come out of that. Now, there's been reports that he's included a 2% increase for staff, and that is true. It has, he has, but it's not until fiscal year 18. So that would take place in fiscal year 18 at 2% for teachers and for support staff. But for FY17, at this point, there's nothing in the budget proposed for compensation. Then looking at VoGAD, excuse me, what happened here? Looking at special education, that's going up. And you've heard us talk about the number of enrollment, the number of students we have in special education going up. And that's one of the reasons we're getting additional money because the number of students are going up. And I can honestly say that, I'm going to show you in a few minutes, we need more special ed staff. Even today, we need more. So this is going to be an area of emphasis as we move forward in FY17. This next one is VoGAD, and I was intrigued because this one's going down. And I was a little bit puzzled by that one. So I did a little research, and what's happened is when they do the re-benchmarking, they do it for two years. They take a look at our expenditure data for two years. And on our VoGAD side, the number of students enrolled in VoGAD courses in the division has dropped from the last benchmark period to this benchmark period. And I was kind of surprised to see that. But it was a pretty significant drop, and that drove a per pupil allocation decrease, which drove the reduction in VoGAD. Now, I will say this too, then that is, I was talking to our VoGAD coordinator, and she was telling me that also, and related to that, is that over the last several years, we've eliminated some VoGAD positions, okay? You probably recall that the TV station position, or TV education position, and computer networking position, and some other areas. So, and what's happened, those students are now just taking other classes, so.
So, Mr. Garrett, when you're talking about vocational education, you're talking about the Vo-Tech classes that we offer at our high schools, not New Horizons.
That's correct. That's exactly right. And then looking on down at textbooks, an increase in textbooks. I'm glad to see that. And frankly, you don't really have to spend any more in textbooks than what you're spending now because we meet this requirement already. Because when they call it, they call it textbooks, but it really encompasses supplies, consumable supplies that are used in the classroom. It includes software that we use in the classroom. So it's encompassing a lot of different areas, and we already, so those funds are being, will be directed most likely to other areas. Employee shared benefits is going up by $485,000. This is a little bit misleading because I'm going to take you down to a footnote on that, which is right here, and it talks about VRS. Well, this is in new biennium, so there has been a proposal to increase the VRS rates on staff. And the VRS board recommended a set of rates, and the governor has proposed a different set of rates, at least in two of the categories, the retired healthcare and the group life. Bottom line is, we're going to have an increase in this, one way or the other, I suspect, even as it goes through the General Assembly. So that drives additional cost. And additional cost that drives is $371,000. So while we look up here and we say, okay, well, we're getting additional revenue for shared benefits, most of that is being eaten up by the additional cost of the VRS. Because remember, they have to, the state has to contribute to the cost of our employees' salaries and their benefits, including VRS. So the revenue goes up, but the expenditure goes up at the same time. E-learning backpack, we don't qualify for that now. That's strictly available for schools that don't meet accreditation. And so we don't have any of that available to us. All of our schools are accredited. And prevention and intervention and remediation went up a little bit. And these other areas went up. This one area right here called additional instructional positions. This is new. This is a new initiative of the governor's, and that is to add staff in divisions across the state. Now, the way he's proposing this to work is, for each elementary school, you're going to receive funding to hire one additional teacher or parent, actually, a principal and assistant principals. But I'm not sure if most people are going to use those. But in any event, a teacher and a parent is what I'm focusing on. So they're giving us a pot of money. That pot of money is based on teacher costs, but we can hire parents with that if we choose to. So we have to hire, if we're going to accept this $386,000, we have to hire 10 new positions. Well, I was concerned because I was a little bit unclear about the instructions that they sent out on this, how to qualify for it. So I spoke with Kent Vicki at the state level. He's the deputy superintendent in the Department of Ed. And I asked him, is it 10 people above the SOQ requirements? Or is it 10 people above what we actually staff at? Because if it's above the SOQ requirements, we meet that already. So that would just be money that we could direct anywhere. Well, the way the language is written, it is above actual, when you actually hire. So we actually have to do hire 10 new positions if we're going to go after these dollars. I also raised the issue, what about if you're in a school division where the enrollment's going down and you're de-staffing? And there's a very good possibility, the way it's written, now those school divisions will not receive this money because they're not going to be adding on staff. So I don't know how this one's going to play out with the General Assembly. I think there's a lot of, let's say, a lot more thinking that needs to go into this one as it rolls through the House and the Senate.
Dennis, was there any discussion? My red flag would be, is this something, this initiative that goes away the following next biennial?
That's a good point.
You know, they allocate $386,000, and they roll that into 18, and all of a sudden, it's away. And now, chances are, we would, if our enrollment continues to grow, we're going to have those positions backfilled. But some school divisions might not get.
That's a great point. And actually, there was, Dr. Shandor sent me an email where a superintendent, the Chesapeake superintendent, had asked that very question, what happens after the second year? Because there's a second year tier of this too, which is for every secondary school you have, you have to hire two new positions. And there's additional funds for that. So the question was, well, what happens in the next biennial? We've hired, at this point, for York County School Division, to be 28 more staff, okay? Who's going to pay for them in those out years? And they indicated, Kent Vicki again indicated back, that what the plan is, is those are going to get added to the SOQ base, so they would continue it. But, yeah.
You get that right.
Well, we have an email. But, you know, that's not set in stone.
Contract.
I kind of felt the same way.
Trust me. Get trust me.
Yeah.
Okay, and then there were some other miscellaneous areas of grant growth. The net of this is about $2.1 million in state revenue increase as compared to '16. So if you take out the $371,000 of expenditures related to VRS, the net resources would be $1.7 million. And again, I don't want to minimize that. That is important because we've had too many years where we got reductions in this area. So I think that the fact that we are seeing an increase here is a positive sign. I'm probably the most disappointed about the compensation piece, that there's nothing in there for teachers and support staff. You know, this has a little ways to go yet because, remember, it's got to go through the General Assembly. So we've got the House and the Senate that are going to come out with our own separate proposals. They will do that in a February timeframe. Then it will go to a conference committee. The conference committee will come out with their proposal. And at that point, both of the bodies have to vote on it again, and then it will go to the governor for ultimate approval. There's set for final adjournments. I believe it's late February for this, unless they go into an extended session. So hopefully, by that time, you know, you'll be in a position to know exactly what your revenue is from the state.
When's crossover, do you know?
Yes, it's, it's, Mr. Matford, I believe it's mid to late February, as I recall. Okay, any questions on the governor's proposed budget at this point? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next piece. Okay, FY17 preliminary outlook. What we wanted to do tonight was, Dr. Shandor and I talked about this one, and we wanted to give you a snapshot, if you will, of some of the things that we're looking at right now as we develop the FY17 budget. So we're looking at the revenue component first. So if you look at the governor's proposed revenue, it's $2.1 million. Now, let's go on down to the federal side. And you look at Impact Aid. Right now, I anticipate Impact Aid to go down. I don't want you to be alarmed about that necessarily because what's going to happen is, I suspect this is going to happen, I don't know for a fact, but I suspect it's going to happen, is we're going to receive an excess of Impact Aid payments this year, beyond what we budgeted, okay? And it could be several million dollars. If that happens, those funds are going to go into the Impact Aid Reserve Fund. The Impact Aid Reserve Fund will then, hopefully, Board of Supervisors will permit us to access those funds and other funds that are in that fund right now, which is close to $5 million, to gradually reduce our reliance on Impact Aid because of these one-time payments that are coming in. Because we won't receive those payments in the future. We've been, the reason our Impact Aid is budgeted where it is now is because every year we've been getting additional one-time payments. We're going to get them all in one year this year, most of them anyway. And that's going to put us over. So you'll see this one, that line item and this one are really tied together. It says county revenue stabilization fund transferred to schools. So what the thinking is, is this. If Impact Aid does go down because of the one-time payments, and the money for this year rolls to the revenue stabilization fund, what we would propose is we pull 11, $1.1 million out of the revenue stabilization fund. Now, what that does is, that still gives us a reduction of federal dollars, of dollars, of $300,000 to $1,450, less $1,150. So we now have a reduction. And what we would do is, over a series of years, probably three to four years, keep doing this, at some different levels though, until we are able to get down to the $8 million. This was the intent of that revenue stabilization fund. So this will be the first time we've actually done this. This one was created in the mid-'90s. But the good news is this. I'm glad the department is paying us. I mean, we could end up with several million dollars in excess of our budget this year. That will, by agreement, will have to roll into the revenue stabilization fund. So essentially, they're going to pay us what we're due. And then we'll use those funds in the out years to kind of reduce this line item for us, this revenue line item. Now, I would point out too, that you do not have control and authority over Board of Supervisors. So they have, they will be the ones that make the decision about whether or not we are permitted to draw down funds on the revenue stabilization.
We would have to make some kind of request in writing.
Yeah, I would suspect, my recommendation is, we include that in the budget document, just as, you know, whatever amounts we have at that point in time. And so it goes to them as a request as part of the budget. And by the way, these two numbers, the 1.4 million and the 1.1 million, they might change. They very well could change over the next several weeks because the federal government has approved a budget now for FY16. FY16, I didn't say '17. FY16, okay? They haven't even started working on '17 yet. But FY16 has been approved. So once I get that first payment from them for FY16, I'm going to better know what our projection is going to be for '17 here because I'm assuming it's not going to go down because they actually increased Impact Aid a little bit this year. So I'm optimistic that, you know, once I get that first payment, I'll know better what to project for Impact Aid next year.
Dennis, so you start to shore that up as the numbers become more solid? Are we looking at something that may take us three to five years?
Yes, yes, sir. I was thinking four years, so you're right in there. Three to five years, exactly right. This next one is a, we talked about this one in December, when I brought some information to you at that work session. I said the DOD was going to be going down by about, I think it was $180,000, roughly in that vicinity. That's been lowered now. It's only at $90,000, $90,000 because federal budget was approved. They bumped up this allocation from $25 million to $30 million. That's a 20% increase. So I just took what we received this year, bumped it up by 20%, and so now the reduction is only $90,000. So that, that's a positive sign. And of course, federal grants, that's always to be determined because we're not sure where, we haven't received any allocation information from the state yet for FY16. And we've talked about this one. So what that means is, at this point in time, without any increase put in here from the local government, because you'll see, it says county increase in operation contribution. It's a TBD. Because we haven't put anything in there yet, okay? That will happen. Don't misunderstand this. What we're doing is, we're just showing you the information we have available right now. We don't know what that contribution is going to be recommended by the county administrator to the Board of Supervisors. And Dr. Shandor and staff are still working on his proposed budget. So depending upon how that shakes out, it's going to be what number gets plugged in there.
Dennis, do you know off the top, you had what percentage of our actual budget right now, total budget that is, that increases? Point seven million to?
Oh, yeah, that would be in the neighborhood of about 3% to 4%. Oh, wait a minute, you're talking about total budget? Total budget, oh, that would be close up to 1% or 2%. Yeah, yeah. Okay, now, looking down at expenditures, these are some of the items that we're looking at. And again, I want to emphasize, just because it's on this sheet, that doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be in the superintendent's budget. We just wanted to give you some of the things that we're looking at. And the first one is the VRS increase. We've got to put that in. That's a mandated item. So I've got mandated there. Now, I want you to look at these next four, five items. They're all, they all have mandated on them. That's the special ed teachers, three FTEs. The special ed paraeducators, three FTEs. Limited English proficiency teachers, three FTEs. Then a reduction in LEP tutors, and then one paraeducator. If you add all of those up, that's 10 FTEs. Remember, we've got to hire 10 new positions, okay? So that's why they have mandated next to them. Now, I can honestly tell you that special education has a mandate from two angles, not only from the governor's perspective, but also from the perspective of federal requirements dealing with special ed students. So that's why those 10 positions are listed there. Then we come down to health insurance. Well, we've had, we've had some really good years on health insurance. Two years ago, you were able to lower the rates by 3%. This past year, you were able to lower the rates on health insurance by 6.6%. We met with Anthem, our insurance group recently, and they've done our projection for next year. And it's looking like they're projecting an increase of 17% in our rates next year. Now, I want to remind you, we have a, we have a fund, we have a reserve, if you will, in our health insurance fund. That's roughly, this right, at this point in time, it's roughly, I think it's 6.8 million, 6.5 million, somewhere in that vicinity, okay? So what we are looking at doing is trying to mitigate some of these costs by using some of that reserve because, and it makes sense to do that because the increase of 17% is driven by one, our large claims. We've had a 100% increase in our large claims. They went from roughly $1.6 million up to $3.4 million, 3.4, 3.5 million. Almost 100%. Now, we are above the norm right now in our large claims. So the expected trend would be, over the next year or two years, that would drop back down. See, that's how we ended up with this reserve fund being at $6 million or better than that is because we bumped the rates up in a couple of years by 20%, and then the trend dropped, and so we had the rates established. So that's why that reserve is so important. It gives us the ability to manage these increases on staff and on the school board in a more logical, a logical way.
I think it's important to note too, that some of those monies in that reserve are our employees' money.
Oh, yes, sir.
Because they're paid into the pool. I mean, we're paying our portion into the pool too. But I think it's important for the community to know when we talk about a reserve for this particular world of healthcare, some of those dollars in that account are our employees' money.
I'll let, no question about it.
So if we can utilize that to keep something going to a 17% increase and keep it at more than 5% until things kind of level out again, it's just good business practice.
I asked Anthem what they felt like was, would be the norm for a group. I asked Anthem what they felt like was, would be the norm for a group our size, and they said the norm in the large claim area would be about $1.6 million for a group our size. Last year was 3.5 million, roughly 3.5 million. So, you know, and this, this is what happens when you're self-insured like we are. You're going to have up years and you're going to have down years. The important thing is having enough reserves to where you can ride out the, the bad years, if you will, and then during those good years, you build that reserve up again. So that, that's the whole intent of that. Now, on this particular spreadsheet, you'll see, if we were to do a 5% increase, the employer's share would be 520, and if you paid the employee's share, it would be $215,000 if you paid that. And again, this is just, this is just giving you information, not recommendations from superintendent at this time.
Now, if we make the decision as a board to do recommendations from our superintendent, do we just do it, does this require any other permissions to be granted?
No, you, you control your health insurance, you control your health insurance plan, okay? So that, that's an important distinction there. I mean, the reserve funds have to be appropriated back again every year by the Board of Supervisors, yeah.
At one time, there was discussion between the school division and the county about the healthcare, the health insurance plan. Are you guys still discussing that?
We are.
We are.
Yep, we are, yep. Looking at the, the compensation package for staff, if we did a current step for all staff, it's $1,250,000, and on a percentage basis, that works out to be a 1.4% average for licensed staff and a 2% for non-licensed staff. So in order to make those two equate to a 2%, it would require a market adjustment for licensed staff of about 0.6 tenths of a percent. So that would be, if we did those two, it would be an average of 2% increase for both employee groups, and then the cost of a restored step for, we would do it in a similar fashion that was done last year, and that is, if you've lost four steps now, last year was five, if you've lost four steps, you would be eligible for having one step restored. Now, anyone watching this presentation, I want to emphasize, this has not been recommended yet, these, we're just providing you cost estimates of what it would cost to do these various items, okay? So, going on down the line, we see that the expenditure increase for these items alone is $3.8 million, and the total revenue increase is 1.7 without the contribution, any contribution increase from the Board of Supervisors. So the net shortfall at this point in time, just looking at these items, which there are more items that have to be considered, we know that, and we've already looked at them, they're just not up here, but there's more things we have to consider. Right now, the shortfall would be about $2.1 million. So you can see, we have a lot of work to do. Staff does, superintendent does, and we are going to be meeting over the next week and two, week or two, trying to bring in a little bit more clarity to some of this. Of course, some of it is beyond our control, the federal dollars, we need to find out what's going on at the federal level for that. But this is where we are right now, and you have, your next work session is going to be in February, it's February the 8th, I believe, and at that time, we will be bringing to you, superintendent will be bringing to you his recommendations for the FY seventeen budget, and then it will go to a public hearing in February at your regular meeting, and go from there, then you will eventually, in March, approve your own budget to be sent to the Board of Supervisors. So that's kind of where we are. Again, this is, this is sketchy information, I'm first to tell you that, but it's a first step of where, where we're headed, and I think that over the next couple of weeks, we'll bring some more clarity to this, and so in February, you'll get a much clearer picture of where we're going.
Hopefully, there's some movement and advancement to include compensation for school division employees and state employees, so we can see an increase in that area, I hope. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense when those are skipped.
I don't understand that one, and, but, you know, that's not my job to understand them, I just have to report it.
When you read, when you read the K-12 as a priority and, and, you know, that's the headline in the front media, and then all of a sudden, you find others skipping a year, it's kind of brilliant. Okay, we're, we're doing that again? So I'm hoping that that changes.
Yeah, yeah. I think a lot of people agree with you on that one, including me, so we'll, we'll have to see how that plays out. There is a lot more work to be done, and it's not unusual for the General Assembly to go in and tweak the governor's proposed budget, no matter who's the governor. So those things are not unusual, and we'll just have to keep monitoring it, and when you go do your advocating at the state level, you'll be bringing that up, and I know all of us have our own groups too, we'll be bringing that up as well, and hopefully see where it falls, so go from there.
Mr. Jerick, could you talk a little bit about the lottery money? After all the news reports about the lottery this weekend?
I was going to say that.
I, I actually, I received a couple of questions about, well, is York County going to get this windfall of lottery money? And if you were to address that, that would be awesome.
You know, I, I wish I could say that, you know, we're going to see a big windfall of this, but, you know, the way the lottery money works in Virginia is this, is that there is a portion of it that goes to education, but it goes into the general fund at the state level first, and then they allocate it out to school divisions. And how much of that gets allocated to school divisions is dependent upon how they decide to carve it up, because they used to give us, years ago, and this is what you hear a lot of folks still, still, I guess you might say advocating to go back to, they used to actually give us an additional payment for the lottery money. So what that meant was this, if they had a good year in the lottery and the lottery receipts were up, I mean, we actually did see a huge increase in that, okay? But now, over the last, ever since really the recession took place in 2009, what's happened is the lottery dollars have been supplanted, if you will, with general fund dollars, and so what happens now is, you know, one area is reduced and another area is increased. And the area that gets reduced is the lottery dollars, they're directed to other areas, and then the general fund dollars get bumped down, so.
It was a lot more transparent in the old days.
It was much more transparent. In fact, I'll, I'll never forget when that first came out, that people really had a good feeling about that. They, because when it first came out, you had to take 50% of it and put it to one-time costs, because they didn't want school divisions to rely on this in case the lottery fell through it. So they had 50% to one-time costs, and the other 50% you could put in your operating budget. And it was a new line item, and it was, it was actually an increase.
Could see that number, it was the true number.
What's happened is, that number has now gone into what I call incentive programs or other programs that the state has pulled the money out that they used to fund through general fund dollars, and so it's kind of got washed out. So yes, ma'am, I, I was, I was, wait, I was wondering if that was going to come up because I was thinking to myself, I wonder just how much of that's going to come our way.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're, so we're going to watch it, we're watching it, we're watching.
It's trickled down through several places.
Now, I can guarantee you, one way we could get into that if we bought the tickets and we won, but, but I'm not going to bank on that one either.
All right, we have two more presentations, so we're going to, Dennis, this is your last one for the evening, you've got to be careful. So Ms. Kurski, we have, we've had conversations with county staff, met with them quite a few times actually, and the item that Dennis is going to touch on here in a minute is other post-employee benefits and some of our discussions we've had with county staff.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Shandor. This is an area where I think the school division is in a position to make some positive changes in some of our OPEB costs and how we fund those. Let me give you some background information first. Our retirees, if you retire from New York County School Division, you are eligible to stay on our health insurance plan, okay? You can stay on there till age 65.
If you have 20 years of service.
No, no, sir, no, sir. You're talking about another piece, I'll get to that in a second. Okay, you can stay on our health insurance plan if you retire in the school division, okay? Now, when you stay on our health insurance plan, you stay on the same plan that every other employee is on, which means that rate is the same for you as a retiree as it is for the employee, except the retiree has to pay 100% of that rate. Our employees have to pay a, a share based on our, our, our contribution levels, okay? But what's important about that is the retiree gets the benefit of what we call a blended rate. So the retiree is paying the same rate that a full, that an employee would pay absent the employer or employee contribution. Now, what that means is this, if we were to rate our retirees in a separate pool and said, okay, we're going to break the employees out of one pool and the retirees in another pool, the retiree pool rate would be probably two to three times more than what the employee rate would be, because when you think about it, their experience is going to be much higher than, you know, a 25-year-old employee, 30-year, 40-year employee, and it goes going on, as I get older, I start thinking about these things. But, but as it goes, goes on up, so the retiree's experience is going to be rated much higher. In fact, I've seen some estimates that, like I said, would bring, would bring the rate up two and three times what the employee pays. We blend that rate, so the retiree's getting the benefit of a blended rate, the same as our employees is paying. Now, that's important because under governmental accounting standards, you have to cost out in such a fashion, what is that cost of providing that benefit to, to the retirees? Because that's a future cost to this board, because you offer that benefit to them till their age 65. That's the first thing that you do. The second thing you do is what Mr. Medford was referring to, is if you have 20 years of service with the school division, you will pay 50% of the tier selected by that retiree, okay? So that's another benefit that the retiree gets, okay, on our health insurance plan. Both of those items are what is called an other post-employment benefit, and we every year have to have an actuarial study done to determine what is the cost of that benefit that we're offering retirees, okay? We do that every year, we have to, because it's a part of our audit and financial statements, it's a part of the county's audit and financial statements. And by the way, the county has a similar situation over there, different benefit structures, but they have to do the same thing we have to do as far as the valuation goes. Now, what's important about that is this, is that you, back in, I looked this up this afternoon, in 2002, we took to the Board of Supervisors a, a proposal to create a, what we called a OPEB Reserve Fund, Other Post-Employment Benefit Reserve Fund, okay? We did that in 2002, they approved it, they set one up for themselves, they have one as well. Now, what we've been doing over that period of time is putting money into that OPEB Reserve Fund. Right now, we have roughly $5 million in that fund. We have a unfunded liability based on the actuarial study of about $6.5 to $7 million. So we are pretty well fine, I mean, we've come a long way in the funding of this, but what is critical to this whole thing is this, that $5 million we have in that Revenue Stabil, in that OPEB Reserve Fund cannot be used by the actuaries to lower our cost in their valuation that they do. Let me explain it differently to you. When they do this valuation, the actuaries, every year they do this, they have to come up with two important numbers. One is the unfunded actuarial liability, the cost that we, they project for offering this benefit to all the retirees to age 65. Then they also have to come up with a cost, what's called the annual operating cost, okay? Those two factors right there, the way it's set up now with us and with the county, the actuaries cannot use our reserve fund because it's not in a trust. It has to be in a trust in order for them to do that. Now, why is that the case? It's the case, it's the, this is the reason, is that if it's in a trust, nobody can touch the money.
Exactly.
Okay, if it's in a trust, it has to stay there. Think of it like a, a retirement plan. When you put money in a retirement plan, you can't go in and use that to bypasses, you can't use it for anything else. County can't use it to pay for public work projects of their own in their fund. So when you put it in a trust, it locks the money up so that then the actuaries can legally say, we can now use these funds to reevaluate your annual operating costs and your, and your debt obligation, net, net OPEB obligation. So there's two good, important factors in that. So the point of all this is, us, county, we're both interested in pursuing, converting from a fund, a reserve fund, over to a trust. County wants to do this on their end, we want to do it on our end. We've been talking with, we met with the VML VACO, they actually have a plan that's been approved by the state to do this, a number of school divisions and counties and cities are already in it, and we were interested in joining that plan. We have three options, we can come on as a completely joint plan with the county, we can come on as a joint plan with separate accounts, or we can come on as a separate plan. We're working through those, we're leaning maybe to the joint with separate accounts, but we're still talking, okay? And now, what we, the plan is this, is that you have a, right now, the tentative date for your joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors is February the 2nd. Dr. Shandor and Mr. Morgan, the county administrator, are going to be bringing additional information to both the boards at that meeting on this, okay? Kind of give you a status of where we are, and if it looks like everybody's in agreement, our goal is to have this trust fund set up for both organizations by June 30. We're looking at June 30 because if it's in place by June 30, the actuaries can include those dollars in their valuation that they do. So we want to get that done by June 30. There's only, there's really only one downside to the whole thing, I'll be honest with you. The only downside is this, it locks the money up, but truthfully, the money's been in there for years anyway, and it would not be something that we would even come to you and recommend we use it for anything other than for the purpose in which it was put in there. So I kind of feel like that it really does fit the objectives of the board and of the administration, and going ahead and setting this up as a trust. I have actually, I probably don't remember this, but the last probably four or five years, I've done a, what we call, I call an OPEB memo to you after the actuarial study's done, and if you look at that memo over the last several years, I've recommended we do this. So when we started talking to county staff about it, I said, guys, we're right on board with you because we think this is going to be advantageous to us, be advantageous to you, for on your side, when you do it for your, your folks as well. So it's something I really think it's going to be a positive thing for the division, and more importantly, it's going to lower your annual operating cost and your liability related to this, because coming up, there's a new, I hate to be technical about this, but I have to say this, there's a new GASP requirement coming down, it's called GASP 75. That's going to hit me in a couple of years. When it hits, you're going to have to show the liability for this on our financial statements. If we got this one set up, it's going to lower that liability significantly.
Dennis, the dollars that are in that building since 2002, are those employee dollars or employer dollars?
They're employer dollars.
Employer dollars, okay.
What employee money has been?
We've been, we've been, that fund has been added to each year.
Yes, sir. And one of the ways it's, it's built up over time is that we have a budget item in the, in our operating budget for retired health insurance. And if we don't spend all those dollars, push it over to that fund. And the county does a similar thing. I mean, it, it's a good, it's a good mechanism because we, this day was coming, I mean, it's just a question of when it was going to hit. And, and the other advantage to having a trust fund is it's managed by an investment group through the VML VACO. Right now, all of these funds are managed by the county treasurer. Now, the county treasurer has her hands tied to a large extent on what she can invest in. VML VACO falls under a different provision of the state code, so they can actually invest in equities. And so we would anticipate much higher rates of return on our investments when they shift over to the trust fund, because they're going to be looking at the markets like any other investor would be, and they've had some very good experience with that. And whereas right now, the treasurer is, her hands are tied to deal with strictly municipal type securities and those kinds of things, which, which are basically paying half a percent or better.
Would that group that's going to manage it, if that all comes to fruition, and would it be, are they protected investments? I mean, it would be something where the economy went the heck out of its mind.
Well, no, 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 there, there is, I mean, if they invest in the market and the market turns down, I mean, those are our dollars, and that, our market could go down. But their, their approach is different than it's going to be than for someone that's invested necessarily in a 401K or, or other, or 403B. They're, they're more sensitive to the funds that they're trying to maintain and trying to maintain a strong balance. Now, I will tell you this too, that as a school division or as a member of the plan, you have the option to choose whether you want the more heavy in the equity area or less heavy in the equity area, and more heavy in the bond area, more heavy in other types of investments. So there, there are choices to be made in that, but overall, this fund has had, has had very good experience since their inception. So we would, and we would anticipate that, but there could be down years, but just like with any other kind of investment thing, there would be up years too that are offset that.
Do you think that's the biggest disadvantage then? It sounds like there are many more advantages to disadvantage. You would say that, are there any other disadvantages that we should be aware of?
Disadvantages, well, I say two disadvantages, the potential for a downturn, and you lock up the money. I mean, the other.
But it's not being used to anybody.
It's not being used now, but, but that is a disadvantage, because if there were a, a tragedy, say, say there was some event that occurred in the county, and the county staff, or the county would have their funds locked up into this trust fund, we would have our money locked up in this trust fund, and we could not use those. But the likelihood of that occurring is really, really small. But the likelihood of that occurring is really, really small. And so that's why the county and us, we feel like this is a, it's not, we're really not sticking our necks out in all this thing. So we feel pretty good about it. And this is not something that just, we are doing on our own. There's been a number of school divisions, cities, and counties across the state that have done this, not necessarily through the VML VACO. Some are doing it through other vehicles. There are other vehicles out there as well. So, but there is a, there are some downsides to this, and you gotta recognize that when you go into it. But to an extent, right now, I mean, what we're earning on our investment through the treasurer's office, I mean, it won't take a whole lot to better than that. And again, I'm not saying anything negative about the treasurer's office. It's that her hands are tied about what she can invest in.
Or she's gonna invest in things that probably have very low risk.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Insured type.
And that would be my only concern with the whole thing, is that if we turn these dollars over to a plan, and what the risk factors would be, I think I'd wanna know that as a board member of where we are on that scale. Because you just don't know what the economy's gonna do. We don't want all of a sudden our operating budget now has to fund missing millions because of a downfall of the economy because our account has been drawn down.
Yeah, we will certainly, as we move along in this, we're gonna, county staff and us are working together on this program. At the February 2nd meeting, you'll be getting more information on this. And so, I mean, it's an area where we want to move cautiously in, but at the same time, we feel like the time is right to go ahead and start moving in that direction.
Sounds good.
Dr. Shandor, I think I'm finished.
All right, our last agenda topic for the evening. I'm gonna ask Dr. James just to provide a really brief update of our status, where we are with the RFP for the medical aspects of adolescence. So board members, we've had conversations for the last few work sessions. So I'll turn it over to Dr. James.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Ms. Haywood, members of the board, win the home stretch. I'm pleased to say that this evening. Today, we reviewed the draft opportunity in Cabinet, and now I will move that document back to county staff. I'll work with the county purchasing agent as well as the assistant county administrator on that document. And see, while we prepared as a staff, we saw the deadlines of purchasing and what the county attorney thinks we needed in our RFP. And once that's done, then that document is completed. That's the court this week.
Then it hits the street.
It hits the streets. And then the next steps, once that, once we have folks who submit their, go through that process of evaluation, our staff will bring that back. And I'll bring that information back to the board for approval and looking at the next steps.
Thank you.
Any question, any other questions for Dr. James?
So we have received an awful lot of information, great information, this evening. And now we are in need of a closed session.
Ms. Haywood, before we go into a closed session, can we take a break?
Sure.
You want to go into a closed session and take a break?
No, we do that. Take a break and then we'll come back.
Okay. So we'll take a break.